There we go, it's on.
Okay.
They can hear us at home now. We do have a quorum.
Okay. So we have a quorum. Please join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republics where religion stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bring this to adoption of the agenda. There are a couple of changes I would like to announce and then open it up for any others that board members may have. I would like to ask that we add an item which was inadvertently left off the agenda, and that is the reappointment of Lisa Papas to the Land Preservation and Commission. And I distributed that the agenda item to the members of the board. The other thing I'd like to do is add a section that we are trying still to figure out how to add on a regular basis, and that's introductions and recognitions. That would precede public comment. And also, there's a couple of items on the consent agenda that we deemed not quite ready. So that's G nine and G eleven. G nine is the action on the Van Curler Prairie Restoration Project. And G eleven is the uproar communications contract. So those two items would be moved presumably to our next regular meeting. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Seeing none, is someone prepared to move the agenda as?
Move the agenda as amended.
Okay, so move by riser, support by Palmer. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. The agenda is adopted. Communications to the Board of Trustees, I believe. We had one which I think is supporting material for one of the people who will speak during public comments regarding Arbury Grove. And are there any other comments about communications to the Board of Trustees? Okay, well, that brings us to introductions and recognitions. And I don't know that we have anything scheduled, but if Lisa Papas is here, we could offer her an opportunity to introduce her or reintroduce herself to the board at this time. I don't know if she was able to attend or if she's attending remotely. Is Lisa Papas out there on Zoom?
I cannot see her on Zoom at the moment.
Okay. Well, in that case, are there any other introductions this evening? Okay. Well, in that case, we'll move on to public comment. This is a time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the Board of Trustees. And ask us the riser to serve as our timekeeper. And we start usually with those who are present, and then we turn to those who are participating remotely. If you are present and would like to speak during public comment, please come on up, have a seat at the table and engage with the Board of Trustees. That's another thing I
I'm glad to have you, man, it's Matt Hysy, I'm five two five Woodgrove. Apologize if you put some of this before, I'm here to speak about Arbor Grove. I'll let you know we're all still out here. At Parkwood, I've resided in Parkwood, I've lived in Syo for twenty-five years, in fact, in two different locations now. And, you know, I want to just point out to you that I'm a capitalist. You can put up all you want, all the retail you want on Myers, and one day if I ever want a smoothie, I think I'll know right where to go. But that said, I think there, it's pretty clear to me that there's been an attempt on a part of leadership here in this town to approach development somewhat sensibly. We have small signs, we have reserved areas for parkland or farmland, et cetera. And it's been clear, you know, the corridor here is a commercial corridor. I live in residential park, and the residential park looks kind of the same. And I consider Arbor Grove to be grossly at variance with what I believe the values of you, our friends and neighbors and leadership of this town have in mind. You know, I, I'm not an NIMBY, I was not even part of this whole effort until I saw the site plan. And just as evidence of the greed, I believe, and I do use the word greed knowingly, you know, the developers. I mean, for example, they have end to end two car garages in some of these places. Now, if they weren't trying to shoehorn so many spots in there, whoever heard of such a thing? I've not, maybe this is something I'm unaware of, but putting the two car garage end to end? It's just an attempt to shoehorn as much as they can into that. But under four or five acres, a build will land. And putting aside the five hundred year flood notion, you know, we all live in an era of climate change, we've been assured by engineers, it could never happen. I'm sure once the money's made and everyone's gone, you know, who would have known? Who would have known something like that could happen? But like I say, this, you know, I'm impressed, I, I, this is a small town, it's great to have small town government. And to your art, like I said, our friends and neighbors, but I think this, this project seems to be at variance. We're not NIMBYs, you know, I never looked at those woods as something that's going to stand for all time. I know that just a few doors down, you know, a trillion went in, something that more harmonious with the general tenor of what's in the neighborhood, across French country states, what have you. You know, around the neighborhood, something that fits the neighborhood is all we're asking. I'm not asking if I'm no tree hugger. I don't need to have every last tree preserved, but I'm just asking respectfully for you to consider the overall tenor of what's going on in that part of Zee Road. So I urge you to turn this project down on that basis as a friend and neighbors and as leadership from someone who I think has approached development sensibly. And I'll ask is that you use your common sense and support us in this regard. So thank you for your time.
Sorry, I missed your name at the beginning, could you say it again?
What?
Can I have your name again?
Oh, Robert Hysy, H Y Z Y, M D.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present who would like to speak during public comment? Please come forward.
My name is Carolyn Tyson, and I have been a Parkwood resident for nearly ten years. I didn't know I was going to be following Bobby, Bob, but my, my concerns are similar. I live in Woodgrove Drive, which runs parallel to Zee. And my condo faces the woods across Woodgrove, where Arbor Grove plans to strip the forest and build up the height. Since my condo is directly across the road from the proposed site of Arbor Grove, I have concerns. My major concern to the development of Arbor Grove is water. Behind my condo and down a slope is an area called Michigan Drain. Water level is only evident after heavy rain and snow meld and that kind of thing, and generally that water level is not noticeable. However, during the past few years, we see the lake frequently, most especially after heavy rain and precipitation. Arbor's Grove plans are to remove four hundred and seventy of the six hundred and fifty-five trees on the property opposite my condo on Woodgrove. Losing all these current trees allows water to no longer be absorbed into the ground. What's it going to do? It's going to run down the hill. Since the grounds on the AG property slope toward Woodgrove were a great risk of additional drainage toward the Michigan Drain. We recognize that the AG plans to create concrete catch basins on the hill. This hill will become higher than Woodgrove Drive due to the tons of soil which they plan to use to raise the property height seven feet taller than the currently topography. Because of this, I feel strongly, there are consequences to consider. The ultimate threat to Parkwood condos and those of us who are likely to be directly impacted is significant. In closing, here are my two points of concern. Does the property have to be raised seven feet above Woodgrove, potentially causing more water to run downhill toward the Parkwood condos until the water reaches the Michigan Drain? Secondly, is there not some compromise to minimize at least some of the four hundred and seventy trees to be destroyed? Can't we allow Mother Nature to work with us all as this development is created? Thank you for listening to my concerns.
Patinson, Syo Township President. Syo Township recently received a million dollars from the state for roads. Because you don't give supervisor reports, we don't know where that money came from or what it is for. Was it meant for the traffic impact of Woodview? They are already putting it to use. The construction has started even before the board has been informed of that money arriving from the state. Would, would you should be paying for the improvements needed because of the traffic they have injected into the area around their project? It is being, if it is being spent on Woodview, that is highly unethical to use public money for what a developer is supposed to pay for. And you tricked me again. Here all this time, I've been saying that Fix Syo is Jim Dreese. I got that totally wrong. Of the eleven thousand five hundred dollars in cash, they raised six thousand dollars of it is from you. You spent, you then spent an additional five thousand dollars to develop the website. Fix Syo is you. You did all this, you spent over eleven thousand dollars on Fix Syo alone. You manufactured the email incident into a legal issue for a colleague, then spent over eleven thousand dollars to capitalize on that incident and warp it into a political attack. It's bad enough you filed a false police report that you had been hacked, something that can't happen when you leave your email wide open on a public computer. Then you used that scam to try and interfere with an election. Of all your dirty tricks over the last four years, this one might be your most unethical. Fortunately, it didn't work. Residents saw through your dirty campaign and voted for trustee Carrie. Of the over twenty-two thousand dollars you personally spent on this election, you only succeeded in the transit village passing and trustee riser getting elected. Was it worth it? I estimate you had wasted in the neighborhood of two million dollars during your reign as supervisor. Over a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars to your personal attorney when you didn't like the advice you got from Finks. Somewhere around three hundred to five hundred thousand in fines, you refused to apply to GFL for their poor service. This year alone, we will spend six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars on Carlisle-Worthman, somewhere near that for OHM. We are now in our third year without a finance director. You blocked the hiring of one years ago. So now we pay consultant fees to plant Marin. Six people have retired and nine people have quit during your reign. That's fifteen of the twenty people that who were here four years ago. I'm guessing that all adds up to about two million dollars. If you add the million from the Woodview Traffic Project, it is more like three million you have wasted. If you'd spent ten percent of the time you did on dirty tricks, scams, and political attacks on actually doing your job, you would have been a great supervisor. Instead, you have damaged this township with your choices. Now that the election is over, I hope this is, this will be the last time I have to address you. Please make sure you work with the incoming board to assure the smooth transfer of information to those who will have to pick up the pieces of the mess you left behind. Thank you.
Is there anyone else present who would like to speak during public comment?
Hi, Roy Townsend, fifty-nine forty Cedar Ridge Drive, Syo Township. I might talk about item G eleven, or not, item G ten. Possible action on Washington County Parks Connecting Communities Grant. It's the relation to the development uplands four subdivisions. We did phase one, connected those communities together two years ago. This would actually connect those neighborhoods to the city of Ann Arbor, Ann Arbor Library, Ice Cube, the soccer facility, and then all the restaurants and other things on Oak Valley Drive. Connecting Communities Grant, reason County Parks has been doing these for like fifteen years is to connect communities to other communities. So this would connect Syo to Ann Arbor. I mean, I, one thing that we, when we, County Parks started doing this, here again, I'm not speaking on a path of County Parks, I'm just aware of these facts because I work there. And I'm not one who evaluates these things, these things, I'm trying to educate the township why it's a good idea. We give these grants to a lot of different townships and cities and communities to connect them. One thing is about sustainability. What modes of transportation have zero carbon footprint? One is walking and one is biking. And that's one way you can reduce carbon footprint by allowing, because I think there's like twelve hundred people that live in those communities. You could actually walk to a lot of these services, but now you really can. There's also AAT bus line on that line, so more people could use the bus line and connect those communities. So this is, you know, this is the first step. When we did the first phase, we connected communities. This potentially, looking at doing the engineering, engineer, figure out is it possible, which I'm, I'm quite certain it is possible, to then connect these communities, like I said, to the city of Ann Arbor, the Ann Arbor Library, Ice Cube, the soccer facility, Target, Meyer, all those other facilities. Because right now, it's not really safe to cross South Church Road and get to Oak Valley Drive and the city of Ann Arbor. I mean, now the thing with obviously, Ann Arbor High School, Pioneer High School, you can make access to that in other schools in the area. I think it's a good opportunity. It's the first step to do the engineering, figure out what the cost is going to be. You're not going to be, you know, something's not going to build right away. But always when we talk about the pros playing that, those are always a phase thing, first connect the communities together, then connect the community to other communities, which is the reason for the Connecting Communities Program, which each year doles out about six hundred thousand dollars, some for engineering and for some for construction. So I guess since I might have another thirty seconds, I will put a plug in for the Van Curler Prairie Restoration Project. I know they got pulled this time, but that Van Curler is a gem that Syo Township does own. And restoring that prairie, I think, should be a priority. I think it's going to come next time, it's going to happen next spring. Basically, you burn it, restore it. Washington County Parks and Metro Parks, they all do a lot of burns, City of Ann Arbor, do those burns. Get rid of invasives, get back the native plants, which is good for the environment. So that, thank you.
Who's next for public comment?
Good evening, Pat Stein, longtime resident of Syo. Well, 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 wasn't that an exciting election? Against all odds, Julian Carey won as Syo's next supervisor. Julian won in spite of all the lies posted, printed, and mailed by the Fixed Syo Group. Julian won the election by nearly sixty percent of the votes. That's a miraculous win considering all of Will Hathaway's efforts in election interference. Congratulations, Julian. Congratulations also to Clerk Flintoff. Jessica, we are so thankful to have you to continue as our cloak clerk. We look forward to four more years of your high level of experience, professional conduct, and integrity as you carry out your complex duties as clerk. Jessica also won by sixty percent of the votes in spite of being targeted by the Fixed Syo Group's many lies posted and printed about her. And congratulations to Kathleen Brandt. We are so pleased with your win to serve as a Syo trustee. Your voice defending and supporting the people of Syo in your statements made at the public comments table can now be matched with authority and resources at the Board of Trustees table. Congratulations, Ryan Yeppel. Ryan, we have so many good things to look forward to with you as our new treasurer. We know we can count on you as someone who will honor the checks and balances that Syo has traditionally avoided. Here's a fun fact. Trustee Noel just won her fourth election as a member of the Syo Township Board. Congratulations, Kathy. It is disappointing that David Reed missed being elected to this board by a loss of only fifty-nine votes. We will miss your contributions to Syo's growth, David. Congratulations to John Riser, who remains a trustee on the board. Now we have four more years of sidewalk projects to look forward to. Yay. And Mark Brizzo, sorry, pal. Looks like the voters didn't appreciate your skills as a timekeeper as much as the Fixed Syo Group did. The next fun fact is a true shocker. The Fixed Syo Campaign was funded by no other than our current supervisor, Will Hathaway. Hathaway bankrolled his dream team and all the Fixed Syo mailings that were riddled with lies about their opponents. He did this at the tune of seventeen thousand dollars. In addition to the seventeen thousand dollars he donated to Fixed Syo's Ugly Smear Campaign, Hathaway also donated his time by planting Fixed Syo campaign sites throughout our township. Please note that one member of the Fixed Syo slate, Judy Monet, did return Hathaway's donation to her campaign. Wise move, Judy, congratulations on your win. On November twentieth, the residents of Syo Township will have peace and progress to look forward to with our new board, and I can't wait. Thank you.
Is there anyone else present who would like to speak during public comment?
Good evening, Kathleen Brandt, Concerned Syo Resident. I wanted to ask who it was that put Agenda Item G ten on this agenda? I know the Agenda Item was created by Chris Chang. This is the possible action for Connecting Communities Grant. Can someone tell me from this board who sponsored putting this on here?
Sponsored it.
Who directed that this item be put on this agenda? Someone directed Chris Chang to do that. Can you tell me who did that?
Not sure what your question is trying to get at, Kathleen, but this is
The question is very, the question is so simple. Okay, I'll explain. I'll, I'll explain. The reason I'm asking is because this project has never been approved by this board. There was great discussion about during the capital improvement plan about this particular project, plus one bus stops at Wagner and Dexter, Ann Arbor. But this board has never deliberated nor approved this project. So someone putting it on the agenda is bypassing the board doing exactly what the voters do not want. The voters want transparency. And some of you members are not doing that because you're pushing through projects that you personally would like to see without any input from any other trustee. No vote on it. Okay, second thing that I want to talk about, this is all about this. I've read the application. It says it is the second phase of a pedestrian improvement project that Syo Township completed in twenty twenty-three. There is, there was no second phase. This board never approved this project. So it is incorrect to put that in the application. There is no second phase, it was never approved. And then also, because we got to dig deep, you know, these grants are intended for trails. If you read their guidelines, it clearly says that. And what it also clearly says is projects generally not considered eligible for county assistance. Streetscape improvements or sidewalks. I would dare say this isn't going to get approved. So you have wasted the opportunity to get a grant for something that the board, the entire board might have agreed on. I also meant to mention that this project was started to be talked about in February by John Riser at the Planning Commission. He's the one that brought it up. He said he was going to talk to Felicia Rayback about it. Again, board never approved it, and I believe these drawings that Mr. Hathaway had OHM create, I believe he took that to some of our legislatures to try to get some money for it. Again, projects that have not been approved. There's a mandate from the voters, they don't want a board that operates like this. And we will not operate like this in the next administration.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak during public comment?
Pam Boyd, a Syo resident, Syo Community Newsletter, Syo Government Watchdog. Congratulations to the members of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-eight Board of Trustees. Trustee Riser, I commend you for saying you would recuse yourself in last night's planning commission meeting because a donor to your campaign was the attorney for the property requesting variance. I believe the commission should have accepted your recusal as stated, period. I was disappointed how the PC voted last night, thereby allowing you to participate in the discussion and vote. Syo Township has a transparency issue, wow, where have I heard that? And needs to do a better job keeping its nose clean. Your political donations, one from developers Dave Lutton to Fix Syo, which you benefited from, and one from developer Dan Johnson are of issue to me and other residents. Because of these donations, I expect you in future planning commission meetings and Board of Trustees meetings to recuse yourself on any topic regarding these two developers in discussion or vote. The same goes for trustee Brizzo. Developer Dave Lutton gave Fixed Syo PAC a thousand dollar donation, which the Fixed Syo candidates benefited from. Both you and trustee Brizzo took hundred dollar donations from developer Dan Johnson. Fixed Syo also took Mr. Johnson's hundred dollar donation. Well, I don't believe there is any law stating you can't take these donations. It begs the question, are they buying your favor? Again, Syo has a transparency issue. I know of at least one other candidate who refused a donation from a developer, and I'd like to see other candidates have similar values. By the way, trustee Brizzo, you reported Dan Johnson's address as three hundred north Z Y. Supervisor Hathaway, in your, in your police report, page seven, it states, William advised that he believes she, meaning trustee Carrie, is trying to hurt him, being that he is her political opponent. William believes that this incident was meant to cause outrage and that it could hurt his standing as Syo Township supervisor. It goes on to say, William also stated that since the email incident, many have been blaming him and saying that he caused the incident, which he believes will make him look bad. Well, duh, William, you are an adult, you are responsible for your own legacy as supervisor. You have acknowledged sending out emails unintentionally in the past. You have caused Syo residents to disrespect you, you and you alone. The timing of the police report smacks of election interference, or was it a hoax that you were perpetrating? Thankfully, it didn't work, but for some, for someone to file these charges that could land a person in prison for up to four years for something that you yourself have previously admitted to doing, you are a disgrace as supervisor. And trustees Riser, Brizzo, Treasurer Palmer, you have enabled him. And on this and other issues, for such successful individuals, you are as dumb as a box of rocks. No offense to rocks, thank you.
Is there anyone else present who would like to speak during public comment? In that case, let's turn to those who are participating remote.
Okay, I've got Jonathan Greenberg. Hello and good evening, this is Jonathan Greenberg, sixty-eighty-nine Green Mountain Circle. I wanted to congratulate all the folks who were victorious in this election or on August sixth. I would like to say that despite my support of Ryan Yeppel, I did run against him as well as a write-in candidate for those who wanted to waste their votes. And actually, outside of my own family, I got twelve votes. And so I was really proud of that, fifteen total. My wife wouldn't vote for me. But my kids did, and I did. So I just wanted to say thank you to the other twelve people of Syo Township who voted for me for treasurer, but I'm really glad Ryan won and hope y'all have a great night. who voted for me for treasurer, but I'm really glad Ryan won and hope y'all have a great night.
Bill Barber. Thank you. Will?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, everybody. On a positive note, regarding the item that's been added to the agenda concerning the reappointment of Lisa Pappas to the LPC, I am the Chair of the Land Preservation Commission. Speaking on her behalf, she's been a valuable member in her first term, and I know she wishes to be reappointed. She's really an asset with her skills, her connection with the university, and the community members that she's personally acquainted with. So I hope the board will choose to reappoint her to a term on the Land Preservation Commission. Thank you.
Thanks, Will. Next, we have Alan Verbano.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Good evening, Alan Verbano, Low Density Parkwood. I'm not able to attend in person tonight, but I'm coming in to support my fellow Low Density residents, Bob Heisey and Carolyn Tyson. Their respective messages are heartfelt and reflective of many in our Parkwood community. I I sent, yesterday I sent an email to the township and I'll just kind of read that into the record. It should be in your packet. Dear Board of Trustees, An update to share. Last Friday, the Parkwood HOA informed Parkwood residents of the following. There's three items. One, documents were signed by the Parkwood Board. The documents were said to be, quote, "on behalf of the Parkwood Board, the seller of the Arbor's Grove parcel and CIO Township," unquote. Item two, recording of a stormwater easement was listed as a next step. Item three, also conveyed was that the, quote, "CIO Township Attorney" had finished their review, unquote, of documents related to the easement. This claimed accomplishment was said to come to the Parkwood HOA from the Arbor's Grove developer, not from the CIO Township attorney. Low Density Parkwood residents continued to support and negotiated low density that reflects a reasonable and neighborly number of units, not in excess of thirty-five units on four acres. Our group finds the above actions disingenuous toward all Parkwood residents and authoritatively disrespectful to the CIO Board of Trustees, which must duly conduct a formal township vote to approve SP twenty-one oh twenty-one before a signing of this type should occur. Respectfully, Alan Verbano, Low Density Parkwood, I thank you for your time.
Someone else? I don't see any other hands up at the moment. Okay, well, that brings us to the end of public comments. I would like to respond to the question. I think I now understand it a little bit better about the item for the engineering for the CIO Church sidewalk camp. The, I guess the motivation for putting it on was, came from me, if that's what you're looking for, Kathleen. The, the way I would view it is that this is a point at which this board has an opportunity to vote in favor of taking a step towards doing that project, but it's not a final step. That would, that will be up to you and the other board that's coming in in November because this is just preliminary engineering. All it does is give us a better handle on what it would cost if the township were to proceed with construction of that project. I think it was always envisioned as a second phase of the project, the CIO Ridge Uplands Drive Sidewalk Project and part of the pathway network that was envisioned by the former TAP Committee. So it's, it's not that this is something that hasn't been thought about and talked about at the township, but this is, I think you're right, probably the first time, other than the capital improvement discussion, where the township board will be actually voting on something related to this project or this phase of this project. And I think also, maybe it just merits a brief comment to Pam. You brought up the police report and quoted from it. What isn't apparent from that quote from the police report is that that was a response to a question from sheriff's deputy. So it sounds as if I was just expounding in that, but actually I was answering questions that were posed to me by the sheriff's department, sheriff's deputy. With that, let's move on with approval of the minutes. The first set of minutes is for the special meeting of July twenty-third. Are there any corrections to the draft minutes as presented? Seeing none, is someone?
I would move their adoption.
All right, so we have motion by Reiser, support by support by Carrie. All those in favor of approval of the minutes indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, minutes are approved. The second set of minutes is the regular meeting of July twenty-third. Are there any corrections to those minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
One on the first page. They have city attorney and think it should be township attorney and think the first set of minutes at township.
Oh.
We don't pay her enough to be a city attorney.
Well, sorry. Any other corrections? Okay, thank you for noting that. Is someone prepared to move the minutes as corrected?
Some.
Moved by Palmer. Support by Reiser. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those minutes are approved. That brings us to the consent agenda. And is someone prepared to move the consent agenda as modified?
I move adoption of the consent agenda.
All right, so moved by Reiser.
Support.
Support by Palmer. And for this one, we do need to call the roll because it includes expenditures. Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Carrie?
No.
And Reiser?
Yes.
Okay, so the consent agenda is approved. That brings us to reports. And the first item under reports is a discussion only item, Priority Waste Update. And we have with us a representative from Priority Waste, formerly of GFL, Sam Carmagno. We have the floor to report.
Well, good evening, good evening, board. I was, when we visited the township about a week and a half ago with our chief operating officer, our territory manager, and myself, talked about the shortcomings that Priority Waste has had and our plans to fix those. We talked about a variety of topics, our recovery efforts when we're not going to complete at night. We talked about our communication back to the township in the event that we don't finish collection on any given day. We also talked about our technology package on our trucks that's coming rapidly. We procured additional resources to put the cameras, GPS units back in our trucks. So that's, that's actively going to take place in the month of, later month of August and into September, which will help us watch our trucks while they're servicing the community. We also talked about a couple of the documents that were not supplied with the, in the transition. Those are in process. I talked to Mr. Hathaway today. You should be seeing them real soon. I expect it maybe today, if not tomorrow. And we also talked about a mailer. We're working on the mailer language now and our ability to do that throughout to every homeowner. And portal training and portal training, what that is, is that's the ability for the township to see the complaints that come through and the response to the complaints and the way of completion. So those are the kind of things we're working on. I know that today we're, we're current in collection and expect to be current through the remainder of the week. So I'd like to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions from members of the Board of Trustees.
Report. Well, I don't want to jump right in, but.
Complaints. How have the, how many complaints have you been getting recently? What dated do you have for complaints initially and what are you now and?
I have, I have a complaint report up to, since July first, and this came out on August seventh. We'd had three hundred and fifty-six calls, an average of about ten calls per day. The highest call count was on July twelfth with thirty-four. So we have, we've been responding to them. We're seeing a decline. I don't have the recent numbers. We're doing, we are seeing.
I'm writing these down. How many, how many have you gotten year-to-date or during the week or the?
Since July first, three hundred and fifty-six.
Since July one, correct?
Yes.
And how much was like in week one?
I don't have the breakdown by week or by day. I have just aggregate total.
Okay, so have they, have they gotten worse, better, attenuated, what?
We're seeing, we're seeing, we're seeing less calls. We're definitely seeing less calls. As we're catching up with our, our routing and our stat, not stat, but our truck repairs, we're seeing less calls because we're better, better able to cover routes on a daily basis.
And is that because of more staffing or is that getting the lay of the land? Or is that because so many people in CIO Township are pissed off and emailing you and complaining and calling? Or, I mean, what do you attribute that to?
The, like, same, same thing I said, said last time. It's the trucks. We had a tremendous amount of mechanical problems with these trucks from the transition from GFL to Priority Waste, tremendous amount of problems. So what we've done is we've, we've fixed these trucks in-house with our Priority Waste mechanics, and we've sent them out to every facility in and around Metro Detroit that can repair these trucks, such things as hydraulic lines, engine problems, differential problems, body problems. So we've sent these things out for repair, and as we're getting those back and fixed, we're able to put the adequate trucks on the, on the routes as needed. That's the primary driver of the problems we've had. Equipment problems.
One of the things we, we talked about when we met last week was the sort of inexplicable removal of the GPS
Oh, yes.
Technology from the trucks before they were turned over. Have you been able to replace that or reinstall that?
That's what we have. We have technicians coming in, specialized technicians to put GPS tracking back in the trucks. Let me explain that just quickly for you. In the transition from GFL to Priority, all of the GFL trucks had GPS tracking in. They had, they had the capacity and capability to watch the trucks on your monitor and see where they're, where they're driving, where they're operating, in some cases where they're not. During that transition, GFL pulled that GPS tracking out of the trucks. So when those trucks were handed over to Priority Waste, they were handed over basically blind. We could no longer watch them from a remote, remote location. So that created a tremendous amount of problem as well as trucks breaking down.
Are you? Okay.
Joyce, what is, what are the latest complaints that are coming into the township?
Yes, as far as trash pickup, we haven't had a, like a substantial number. I can't detail exactly how many because I don't have the report in front of me. But in speaking with our code enforcement officer, he had indicated that we've seen a substantial drop in complaints. And there's been days we have not received any.
Okay, and so the trucks came from GFL or the, they were owned by GFL. You were with GFL before.
Yes.
And then you transferred with the trucks. Okay, so and from what I read, that a lot of the trucks were in disrepair when Priority purchased them. There's, there's many articles out there stating that.
Well documented, yes.
So why would, okay, and before we did have reports here and there, from what I remember, about trucks, hydraulic fluids, and especially of Block Alpine where they had waste management, they, they said that they never had any issues. But what is to reassure us that these trucks sound like they're old and in disrepair, even though they're, they're now repaired? But what about in the future? Are these old trucks? Are, is Priority planning on purchasing newer trucks and replacing the old trucks?
The trucks generally are, there, there's a wide range of trucks. Some are older, some are newer. And the, the trucks, when they transferred over, many of them were, were working in the city, in the township. When I left GFL, it was almost a month before Priority Waste took over. So what happened in that timeframe, I necessarily wasn't the director of operations for the, for GFL that time. So what happened at that time, I really can't say, but I can tell you that when the trucks came over, they were in in need of a lot of repair. Okay, whether they were new or whether they were old, hydraulic lines loose and leaking. So again, we have people working around the clock, around the clock, seven days a week at our facility repairing these trucks, getting them ready and back up to speed so they can operate properly in your township.
Will they be replacing the trucks as they age out?
Oh, yes, absolutely. We've got new trucks coming in. We've got a like, a lot of rental trucks in right now to subsidize the fleet so we can get to work them.
One of the things that I think you also explained is that the Priority does something that GFL doesn't generally do, and that is to have these kind of cameras on the trucks so that they can not just rely on the GPS to monitor what, where the trucks are and what they're doing, but they have a photographic record, which is then part of this a portal system for handling complaints.
Absolutely, absolutely right, yes. These cameras, as I said, they're being outfitted with the Priority Waste technology, which will be the GPS, and then truck will have up to six cameras on it, one facing forward, one facing backward, one facing the driver, one facing each, each side of the truck. And it will show the activity of the truck and what's, what's happening at each particular stop. So if you called in, once the cameras are installed, and again, we're working through that now. We expect by, later this fall to have cameras in, in these trucks. So if you were to call and say they missed my trash at my particular house, we can go back to the feed, pull up your address on the GPS, and the camera will show exactly whether your trash was out or not, whether we picked it up or not. It'll be able to show you that right in, in a photographic evidence.
Is that technology up and running for all trucks or is this unfolding as well?
It's unfolding. It's unfolding as we speak. We're installing that now.
And when will they be complete? That's.
We probably have been too aggressive with our presentations. Later this fall, we'll have the cameras and cameras, technology and trucks.
I think that was another thing we realized is that when you and Paul came prior to the transition, I think Paul was speaking as, you know, with the confidence of, you know, past experience with priorities, you know, sort of leveled standards for, for customer service. And I think the transition really, I think, caught everyone by surprise. And I think Paul admitted as much to me afterwards that he was really the, the quality of the trucks was really a problem. But you're not the only person who transitioned over from GFL. Many of the truck drivers who came over are actually people who have been driving routes in CIO Township for the past few years.
Yeah, that's absolutely true. Many, many of the drivers, many of the helpers that work on the trucks, mechanics, supervisors, informants have come over as well. And we are, we are, we're working very, very hard to solve these problems, bring some more consistency to the routes, and again, we're looking forward to the technology package. I know that since I've been at Priority Waste, I've been able to see some of the technology in some of the communities that were with Priority Waste prior to the transition. And I can see how those cameras work and operate and the, the things they can show you. It's pretty impressive.
Palmer, do you have any questions?
Just want to say, you've never missed my garbage, ever.
That's, that's good, that's good to hear. It's probably, there's probably many that we haven't missed, but those people don't say much. When you miss your trash, that's who you hear from, and we know that.
Yes.
One more question. There's some.
One more question, um, there's, some residents have door service? Is it, I don't know if that's the right term.
It is.
Is that the right?
Door side service, yes.
Door side service. Is that still happening? Is that consistent? I don't know if we've had any complaints about that.
We did have some complaints. That is happening. Uh, one of the trucks that services that, and you might have seen it in town. It is, it's a small garbage truck. It's on a Ford F-five fifty chassis. So it's a, it's a pickup truck with a garbage truck body on the back of it. That's the driver that runs around town, uh, in a light duty vehicle that picks up door side service in response to, uh, a missed stop complaint. So that truck was also one of the ones that was broke down. We've since gotten that fixed and he's back in town doing his thing now.
Okay, that's good. So I'm assuming there's, um, a physical issue that, or maybe a long driveway down a, the hill that they wouldn't be able to. Okay, that's good.
Yeah, that, that, that little vehicle helps, uh, considerably and that, that, those exact kind of situations where that comes in handy.
And those, and to answer your earlier question, um, trustee Carrie, the types of complaints, uh, well, the, the number of complaints has dropped significantly, um, since, um, begin since July first. Uh, we did have a lot of like whole neighborhood complaints, um, in those first weeks, uh, which I think is part of the big volume. But, um, it's sort of tapered off, but some of the complaints are the kinds of complaints that you were just citing where it's, uh, the door service. And I think, um, another thing that didn't transfer over right away was, uh, some of these route notes. Um, I can't remember what, um, what were they, how they were described in the, in our meeting. But so, some of the information that also would have helped didn't come over from GFL, um, right away. So some of these, um, special instructions for, you know, door pickup or, um, some neighborhoods where there were special instructions for how the trucks were to maneuver on, uh, narrow roads. Some of those things didn't move over. So the more that, um, we've been able to, or I should say, you've been able to match up the prior GFL drivers who were familiar with the routes, with the routes, um, inside of Township, uh, I think that's helped to diminish some of these complaints.
It, it, it really has, yeah. All those, uh, all those, wha- what you think are small details, when they don't come over aligned with the routes properly creates, creates heartache and, and heartburn. So we're, we're, we're putting those pieces back together, those notes back on the routes. Again, that mini packer, we call it, back out here doing, doing, uh, doing the reconnaissance and the, the, uh, the, uh, backdoor service. So that helps. It minimizes those things. The communication, hey, we don't walk on water. We know that when there's problems, we're going to let the township know. Uh, if we don't finish one night due to a breakdown, and our intention will be to go right back there the next morning, finish where we left off and catch up. That's not the case today. It's not been the case this week.
I'm glad to hear that, uh, Priority's, uh, working on the, uh, that mailer that we discussed. Um, because that wasn't clear whether that was going to go forward. Uh, but that's addressing one of the things that we have had a number of complaints about, and that is, uh, people, uh, Syo residents would have liked to, uh, have had more communication, more explanation for how the transition was going to go forward. Uh, some of it having to do with the service and some of it having to do with just clarity about how, how and to whom they should pay their bills.
Yeah, we, 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 we do wish there was more communication in, in the transition. Uh, because Syo Township and the residents were a customer of GFL until June thirtieth. Uh, they didn't want any interference from Priority Waste communicating to their customers until the transaction took place, which it did at that day. And that, of course, then we're playing catch up. So looking back, it probably was an error in some ways to not communicate better, uh, in advance of the sale. But again, the sale didn't happen until June thirtieth, so there was no, uh, formal ability to talk to customers of GFL at that point.
And when is this mailer?
We're, we're working at talking internally now, so we'll have more information forthcoming.
I think the idea is that it's like the mailers that, uh, Syo Township has done in the past with GFL.
Yes, it's just, I was wondering when this would happen.
Yeah.
I think it would.
I.
Help ease.
We'll, we'll.
Obviously.
Obviously, yes.
Were there questions or comments?
I don't have any. Rise or disappear.
Well, that does raise a question, uh, whether we can, whether we need to, um, get John back because we don't currently have forum in the room.
This is discussion though.
It's just discussion at this point, but if we start moving on with the agenda, then we're.
Oh, yeah, with the rest of the agenda. I think we're, we.
I think we're finished though.
Okay.
Uh, thank you very much for coming, Sam, to represent.
Your, your priority. Thank you for the, uh, the opportunity to speak again, and again, we apologize for the, uh, the service disruptions we've had. We're, we're striving to get this back to something that, uh, that you can be proud of and we'll be, uh, we'll be proud of as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Talked at one point about you having an opportunity to answer questions, but, um, I know the memo is not something that we're going to discuss this evening, so.
Right. I don't have anything to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, in that. In that case, um, we are ready to move on with, uh, regular reports. Are there any comments or questions about any reports that were distributed? I distributed, um, memo. If people have questions, I, that's fine.
The, um, the manager for the, the barn.
Yeah, I wanted to ask you about that too.
Well, yeah, that was just distributed. I figured I'd get to that.
Do you have a report from, from PC?
No, there was, uh, one item, two items last night. I haven't prepared it yet. Uh, one was a, um, I will, busy work, um. The, uh, one item was a request from a resident who lives on Fort She Lane to split the parcel and sell a part of the parcel to a woman who wants to move with her three children for that parcel. And, uh, that had some controversy associated with it because, uh, there, there was, uh, disclosed, and I disclosed to the planning commission that, uh, the attorney for the petitioner happened to have made a hundred dollar contribution to my campaign. And the issue of recusal came up, so that, that took some time attending to that. And then during the substantive part of the, uh, meeting, it, uh, passed on a four, kind of thing. Maybe five to zero vote to recommend to this body to do that. And then recusal will likely come up again, um, since I'm on the planning commission as well as this body. And then we also talked a little bit, but didn't get much farther along other than we talked about the, uh, potential changes to the solar ordinance that Laura Kretz is more. Those are the two items on that.
Okay, this, so the solar ordinance is, um, because at the state level.
That's right. To, to kind of align with the state law to allow more solar production.
Great. Forward to seeing that.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll prepare a written report.
Thank you.
Other questions?
No, but I wanted to mention, you've got my written report, the treasurer's investment.
Right, right. That was distributed after the meeting was.
I put out there on the table.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Well, before we move on, I wanted to make sure that people were aware that there is an event, um, on Saturday, August seventeenth. Uh, the annual Fun Fly and Picnic, um, of the Syo Flyers, uh, who use, um, the area out here that we're, um, turning into the Township Hall Park, um, as their, um, landing field, I guess, or, or flying field. Um, and it's an opportunity for members of the public to come out, um, tent starts at ten o'clock, um, and goes, um, through at least one, um, on Saturday. There's flyers, uh, for the flyers, uh, out on the front desk. In Township Hall. Uh, if, if there aren't any other questions about written reports, um, that were in the packet, perhaps this is a good time to turn to, uh, Township Manager.
Oh, sure. Um, I, uh, prepared an update regarding the, um, Syo Church Barn. Um, as everyone may recall, I believe it was April of twenty twenty-four, we had an item on the agenda regarding, uh, the roof to be replaced. And, um, that did not occur at that point in time. Um, the board asked me to get back with, uh, the friends of Syo Church Barn to discuss, um, the cost and then also to review any other options available related to the barn. And so, uh, this report just, uh, provides information regarding a couple of options. One, uh, in this, in discussing this with the friends of the Syo Church Barn, it was suggested that a new long-term lease agreement be considered, uh, by the township. And in exchange for a new lease agreement, uh, the friends will continue to maintain the property and pay ten thousand dollars towards the replacement of the roof. Uh, they also want the township to support a historic designation related to the barn. Um, a second option is to request proposals and sell the property as is. Uh, the township did receive an inquiry from one of the nearby property owners expressing an, an interest in purchasing the property. And, um, so if the township decides to request proposals, it would allow, uh, all interested parties to submit a proposal. Um, the township could also include any restrictions related to the use of the property. Uh, the property can be sold as is or the roof can be replaced. But I do think, you know, overall, there should be some action taken because of the damage that, that will occur with the roof leaking too. So I wanted to bring this report to you to get some feedback in terms of how, how to proceed.
Damage to the third floor or damage to water, damage to structure?
Probably to structure.
Things inside.
Things inside, yeah.
Events. That's events. We should keep it and then farm the guano. And we could make some good money, donate it to the historical. That might be another option.
Did the adjacent owner indicate what he or she, they wanted to do with it?
Um, I believe it was mostly for farming.
Isn't it, it's just a, it's a small corner parcel.
Yeah, just.
With the barn. It's.
Yeah. So that. And if I, I, I. The other, maybe advantages, maybe to allow more access as far as, you know, entryway into the property by taking that approach. Which we don't have right now.
Would they, would they keep, would they keep the barn there or tear the barn down and use it?
Uh, we didn't get into a detailed discussion, you know, that's part of the process if you request proposals. If that is something that you'd like to see take place, that could be one of the conditions related to the sale.
You mean retain the barn? I mean, it's, it's, it's a nice barn.
Yeah. And I think the other, as mentioned earlier by the friends, they'd like to see the historic designation. So that might be something you may want to consider as well.
How old is that, the barn? Was it nineteen thirties? Is that what I remember?
Parts of the barn are older. The foundation, the foundation is much older. Uh, but I think what was determined is that, uh, most of the structure up above is not as, is, is younger, newer than the foundation.
Could it qualify for historic?
That we don't know.
And we have to. It would not until you tried.
Is that a county thing?
Yes, it would, assume, I, I assume it would be the same or similar to the process that we went through with. The, the, the property out.
We had to hire consultants to do that.
Well, that's the thing that, uh, to pursue, that's the one, the question I guess I would raise is if we, if, if, yeah. Pursuing the historic designations is going to cost more than ten thousand dollars. They would contribute towards the roof.
Well, and I don't know if they're looking at, uh, the township pursuing it as much as the township supporting their action.
Oh, and they would pursue it and we would be supportive of that?
Yeah.
I guess the question is, does being supportive of it entail an expenditure or not?
I think that's something you can determine.
Yeah.
We, we've, we've got a barn that needs a roof to be paid by somebody or the parcel needs to be sold and they'll do with the roof and the barn what they will unless we make that part of it. Is that kind of where we are on it? Or, we don't have to decide tonight, I get, you know.
We don't. We, we don't have to decide tonight, although I think, um, Township Manager has pointed out something that's important, and that is that the longer we wait, the more weather damage occurs.
Yeah. Or you could, you know, as another option, if you decide you want to maintain, um, the barn and use it for the current purpose or a different purpose, you can do that and just replace the roof so that you don't have a problem with the water damage.
So, does an RFP have to be economically based? Are we obligated under one of our policies or ordinances to accept the highest bidder? In other words, or can we say if somebody wants to preserve the barn and, and, and?
I think it's a matter of how you structure your request for proposal. If, if that's one of the areas of, of interest, it would be included.
But what if we, what if we put RFPs out there, one, one, you know, the friends of Syo Barn want to, they want to put the new roof on it or something and the other person who next door, they want to, you know, leave the barn in its current condition and let it fall down and drive across the property to get to their farm? Or I, I don't know, like, what would the criteria be? Would that be in the RFP?
Yes.
Whatever we do.
Similar to what you did with, uh, the Liberty property, the Liberty Road property.
It has to be at least fair market value because it's taxpayer funded, whatever we.
Or, or the overall benefit to the, the township, that, you know, if there's a greater benefit to the township.
But what if somebody doesn't bid fair market value because of the, 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 the condition of the barn or the condition of the roof? Then, and then.
Well, that, that's factored into fair market value.
Or to see.
You presumably would take into account the, the physical condition of the structure, uh, the access to, the problems with access to it, the, the limited, uh, size of the parcel. I mean, when we got a preliminary comment from the, uh, Patrick McCauley, the Realtor who assisted with the other farm sale, um, that's what he said would, would, these factors would be, um, would make it very difficult for it to be usable. Um, and then, and then really the only person who could use it would be someone who was also farming the adjacent property. And so the potential for someone doing that and having an interest in the barn is part of, I think, what we're.
There's no water, there's no electricity, no gas and no sewer.
I don't think there's no access. Drive around it either. I mean, like, there's nothing, that, that parcel is small.
It's very small.
Yeah. There is no access.
I remember GIS, I mean, like.
The, the reason that I think that an RFP makes some sense is that we have had at least one potential user raise his hand and say, he might be interested in purchasing if there was an RFP.
So do we, do we ask Joyce or staff to put one together or do we percolate on it?
Don't look away, Joyce.
No, 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 or, you know, so, is there, is this an action item for us tonight or?
It's a discussion item tonight.
Discussion item, you know.
We could give a direction to Township Manager to bring something back to another, to our next meeting or to a future meeting.
Before September fifteenth.
Before September fifteenth.
And, and actually, um, uh, Clerk Flintoff was, was very, she was very interested in having this item brought to the board for discussion because of the fact that, you know, right now we're not doing anything and we need to probably make some decision related to the barn. It's a nice barn.
I would like to see it preserved, but I don't necessarily think that we need to own it.
I agree.
I'm, I'm with it. I support that.
Could we bring back a, an, an, an RFP for the board to consider as an action item that would have that as a condition?
Yes, well, yes, we can do that.
And what's the advantage of making it a historic district? That it can't, it has to remain in that condition?
It's, you know, it has restored.
Right.
It, it would be. It, it would be protected if it was, if it was a historic district such like the one that we created out on, on West Liberty.
Other than from the elements, yes.
Yeah, it would be, it would have, uh, any changes to the exterior would have to be reviewed by the County Historic District Commission. But we don't have to, it, it might be possible to sort of put some level of protection on it without going that step. If there was a condition on the sale.
A condition of an RFP.
Right? Isn't that what we talked about um with the farm? We said there's other ways of putting restrictions on what can happen there. Independent of the historic district protection.
Yes, as, as far as, as far as keeping it in a certain condition, like it's red. And it, and it keeps looking as it is right now, that might be a little bit difficult. Um, which is, you know, that's the beauty of the historic district, right? That you really can't make, you, you couldn't paint it fuchsia. You couldn't, you couldn't probably have a mural on it. Um, so I, I think some reasonable restrictions, but generally if, what, what we did with the other property was um a restriction on land division, which is easy to do in the deed. And then we did a zoning restriction, um, which is easy to do under zoning, but some of these other things that we're talking about might not be as easy except for with the historic district.
Such a niche parcel.
Well, it's currently under uh an agricultural conservation easement, correct? Isn't that what we determined that it was included?
It, it was included and, and then it was transferred to the township and essentially the conservation easement was for the benefit of the township, so that conservation easement merged with the land transfer. So it's not really under an easement anymore, but we could renew that if we were going to sell it.
That'd be one way of protecting it. Is that enough? Sort of grist, grist to work with?
We can, we'll put together a draft.
A draft.
Bring it back or add it to the agenda for discussion. Okay, and some action.
You get, you get the sense that's what Jessica would be supportive of too?
Yeah, I think so, based on my discussions. Yeah.
Well, if it's coming back as a draft and we want to tinker with it.
Yeah.
When we have more board members present, then we can do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that that conclusion of your?
That concludes my report.
Okay. Um, unless there's other reports that I'm, I don't want to rush us, um, the, uh, the next item is A one, this is a new business and I believe we have with us um our utilities director to speak to this item.
Okay, what now this week?
Well, um, this was one that is basically come from a higher authority than me, uh, uh, work that we need to get done. Um, I think the best way to summarize it is probably just for me to read actually from the background portion that I submitted. So for the Environmental Protection Agency in Eagle, every municipality is to pro- provide a complete distribution system inventory list of their water service line. So that basically says uh what kind of material, uh water service line material is on the public side and what is on the private side. Um, and does that water lines stay consistent as it goes into the customer's house or business? Um, and we need to provide all that information to them by October sixteenth of twenty twenty four. This work was supposed to start in twenty twenty. Um, so that's why we're a little bit behind the gun here. Um, we have roughly, probably close to twenty-six hundred service lines at this point. Um, and counting as they're being installed. Um, so with that, um, and the, and the lack of um, documents that were kept, uh, you know, not having a good, a good system in place. Uh, under the time crunch, we approved O H M to help and assist look through all of our engineering documents and all of the other documents that we had here. So out of roughly twenty-six hundred lines, they were able to narrow it down to eighteen hundred service lines that we needed to be identified. Uh, the big reason why we're left with that many is we have no information on the private side. Uh, we employ Washtenaw County Plumbing Inspector uh to um inspect the service lines on the private side as well as up into the house. Uh, they did not take any notes and write down exactly what service line was installed um and when. Um, so there's no evidence for us to use uh to submit. Um, so out of the eighteen hundred service lines, we have to identify a minimum of twenty percent on the private side. The best way to do that, that's least impactful to the homeowner or business property is to hydro excavate an eight-inch circle uh just beyond the shut off on the customer's side. Um, all the way down to the service line, you take a look and see what kind of the service line material is, you take a picture of it as your evidence. Uh, and then you backfill it and move on. Um, most of it will hopefully be in the grass, some will be in sidewalks. Um, some will be in asphalt, some maybe in cement. Um, so it could be a little bit more repair work in, involved with that, but we're going to try to mitigate that as much as possible. Um, so that leaves us roughly with three hundred and sixty-eight houses that we have to identify. If, and I'm assuming based off of everything that I've been told here, if the, if the service line material comes back as copper or plastic, um, I can safely say that in the rest of the area that those lines have been identified in, that they will remain those same type of materials. And I can confidently say that there should be no lead in our system. If any of them come back galvanized or lead, of course, then we're going to have to do much more research in that, in that specific area that we find it. Um, which means that we may meet, not meet the deadline for this. Um, I don't, I don't think we're going to find any ladder galvanized. Um, however, there's always that chance. Um, so, um, in the sewer cleaning uh contract that um was passed last meeting, part of what O H M and I asked to be in that um contract was for that, for the companies that were bidding on it to supply a cost to do the hydro excavating, seeing how it's done by the same machine. Um, and so they gave us a daily rate of six thousand two hundred and fifty to use that, to have their professional services for that day. Um, to hydro excavate, to backfill and then do any land restoration. Um, if they, and I, and I talked to Dave, the um, the manager or the um the operational manager of that company, he says he believes that they can get about thirteen private side houses done in a day. Um, and I believe that is to be accurate. I've watched hundreds of these done in the city of Flint. Um, and city of, in the city of Flint, when I was there in that project, uh, for hydro as- excavating, it costs anywhere from five hundred to eight hundred per house, just depending on the situation, if it wasn't a sidewalk or, or anything like that. Uh, so basically, if they do thirteen a day for six thousand two hundred and fifty a day, that averages around four hundred and eighty per house. So this price is very fair, I believe, seeing as how that work that I witnessed was done six years ago, probably at this point now. So it's very fair. Um, and we did um ask for bidding from five other um contractors as well. It's just they're the only ones that submitted a bid. So, um, I'm asking for two hundred thousand dollars to be supported. Um, that's thirty days of work, um, and that would give us the needed, that would give us roughly three hundred and sixty-eight service lines within that, within that thirty days um of that, of uh contracting them out. Um, and that would allow us to have all the information that we need in order to conclude our report to Eagle, um, which is being handled by me and O H M to, to get that information to them. That's kind of the, the big summary.
Is there any way you could choose to have the work done at houses where um it would be less uh, you know, where it would be the lawn that you would be, or the extension where you would be digging the hole rather than going through concrete?
Right, so in this uh, for Eagle, we have to create a whole service, uh, basically create a whole list of every single house that, or business that we have a service line at, on an Excel spreadsheet. Then you have to randomize it. And then after you get done randomizing it, you have to pick the first three hundred and sixty-eight houses, whatever order they're in. Um, and then just, those are your addresses. Now, they do allow us for some circumstances to ask them if we can change it for certain circumstances like that or it's in a tree or, or certain, certain things. We plan on still meeting with Eagle, if this is approved, to um continue further talks about um, perhaps changing certain locations on that list. Um, say if we get fifteen of them that show up in uh trail woods, you know, it wouldn't make any sense for us to go into trail woods because we know exactly what that is. So we will try to do our best to, you know, move the service lines around the best so that it gets we get the most accurate twenty percent representation of what we don't know. And so we will be trying to do that as much as possible. Um, especially if we have like forty of them in the uplands district. Well, do we need forty of them in the upland district to get accurate representation? Probably not.
Yeah, so Eagle allows for some.
Yes, we can kind of talk to them and, and let them, yes, and see what they'll let us do. So we do plan on to have that communication going forward. Um, as we create that list and, and start this, uh, before we actually have them go out there and start hydro excavating, we'll, we will have a meeting with uh Eagle and see uh, see if we can make certain changes that make sense to us and if they agree to it and it's going to help us uh, get that twenty percent and perhaps maybe limit um every single line, uh, every, you know, every if it's going to limit the three hundred and sixty-eight houses uh to a little bit lower number and it's still going to get us the confidence that we need, uh, that, that will definitely be a conversation that we have.
Questions?
So the three hundred and sixty-eight, it's within the water sewer district. We don't know, like, it wouldn't be in one neighborhood versus another.
Correct, so.
That's what I'm hearing from people.
Yeah, so we're going to take the eighteen hundred service lines that we don't have. Um, and for, you know, we don't have all the accurate information on, so per our ordinance um, that we can use since nineteen eighty-nine, we know everything had to be copper from the public side. That's the side that we're responsible for. So for just under a thousand of them, I guess more or less like seven hundred or something like that. O H M was able to find enough information to say what the private side was. So the rest of them, the, the eighteen hundred that's left, we have to randomize that list and then pick the top twenty percent.
And based on that, we can assume that the houses that are adjacent or in the same area are likely from the same material, whether it's galvanized, copper, lead.
Correct.
Or PVC, whatever else it could be.
Correct, that's what they're allowing us to assume. Um, if all of it comes back copper, plastic. Um, and like I said, um, since our system was put in eighty-five, um, lead was not really being used at all at that point in time. It wasn't something that we allowed on the, on our public side, so for them to connect the copper um, to lead would have been, I mean, it just, uh, nobody reasonably would have allowed that to happen, so I believe we won't find any lead in our system. Or galvanized for that matter.
And this lets us know where we're, we're going to likely need service in the future, or we could have breakdowns or the galvanized rust and it cuts down on the flow, or I mean.
This is only to meet compliance, uh, so there's no lead allowed in the system anymore by twenty thirty-seven. So we would have to set, if we find any lead or galvanized lines that were once connected to lead, we would have to set up a, a service line replacement program on our own behalf. And we would have to get rid of all that by twenty thirty-seven. Um, so what we're saying is, we can confidently say by turning this paperwork in, hopefully that, hey, we know for sure we don't have any lead lines or lead lines that were once connected to galvanized. That's our evidence supporting it. And then each year, we have to submit any new house or business that was put in with their service line material.
So it says service line, is it more specifically residential service lines?
The private side.
Or?
The private side.
Or there's some commercial?
So the private side is anything after the shut off on the service line. So for residential and for commercial, there's a shut off.
Right.
Usually in the right of way.
In the yard.
In the, yes.
Yard.
So after that shut off in the yard, everything that goes into the, on that property into the house is the private side.
No, but are, are the service lines mostly residential or are they some commercial?
Yes, mostly residential.
Some commercial?
There's definitely going to be some commercial.
What era generally before what year are we going to be looking?
The entirety, whatever the eighteen hundred service lines that we have left.
Okay.
Uh, whatever that's randomized to, it's going to, it's going to randomize those service addresses. And we have to pick the top three hundred and sixty-eight addresses. So if, if it comes up with twenty commercial buildings, those are the twenty that we have to go do unless we have a good reason um, to tell Eagle that we can't, and then they got to allow us to change it to something else in that area.
Eagle, who randomized? Eagle or we?
So O H M is going to do that on our behalf.
So this is due by October sixteen?
Correct.
And what is the kind, the penalty for?
So.
Missing the deadline.
O H M and, and myself, we, and I, yeah, Joyce was a part of it too. We asked those questions in a meeting with uh the lead and copper division. They're still not one hundred percent sure on exactly what they're going to do. Um, from going to conferences and things like that, uh, it seems like there's going to be quite a, quite a few communities that are not going to have all the information on time. Um, so it could range from anywhere from a notice of violation um to a fine. Um, those, those are probably going to be the minimum. Uh, the minimum would probably be a notice of violation. If, if you really haven't started anything, it could be a fine, and then you're going to have to commit to Eagle and writing what the next steps will be for you to get into compliance. Um, so luckily, for not, I mean, having to spend two hundred thousand dollars to get this information, i- it, it is a lot. Um, however, there are communities that are spending um quite a bit more for sure. Um, the one thing I would say is that in twenty twenty, there were a lot of grants and stuff available to help with this type of work uh that just weren't taken advantage of. Um, if we qualified for them, I'm sure we would have qualified for some kind of grant to take care of this work. Um, it's just the work wasn't recognized and started then.
This is, we need to get on this then. We don't really have a choice.
Do you want to move it or I can move the uh, I would move the model motion?
The move by Riser to authorize one hundred thousand dollars from Capital Outlay five nine one dash zero 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 dash nine seven two to system repairs five nine one dash zero 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 dash nine three five. And to approve the remaining amount of one hundred thousand dollars from the five nine one fund balance to system repairs for work by pipeline management not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars to identify roughly three hundred and sixty-eight service lines and to authorize the township to enter into a written agreement with pipeline management, subject to the review and approval of the township attorney, supported by Treasurer Palmer. Is there any further discussion? Uh, please call the roll. Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
And Riser?
Yes.
I have some questions before we leave this.
Yes.
I would, some of our older buildings in the district, probably you're going to find galvanized, I use some lead, just because that's what they used way back then. But all of our newer stuff, we're not going to find that because they weren't even using it when we started.
Right.
In the newer buildings now, I, I just am concerned about the older homes. You know, there are some along the corridor, you know, but there's galvanized pipe.
Yeah, I would suspect um before the.
What do we do with that?
I suspect that, of course, before the water system was put in, that of course there was galvanized plumbing inside the house that was connected to the well water. Now, we're only responsible up to the water meter. So once their well was no longer in use and they elected to connect to the water main, whenever that happened, it would, um, since nineteen eighty-nine that we can, that we can use our information. um, since nineteen eighty nine that we can, that we can use our information, they would have had to use copper coming from the water main. And then to use lead again aft- after nineteen eighty nine um, to connect wasn't allowed, so the the timeframe that we're really worried about is from nineteen eighty five to nineteen eighty nine. And again, it was still in that ordinance that you had to use copper. So from them to, to go from copper that was provided by us from the water main and then connect it to lead, very unlikely. Um, to connect it to galvanized, I would say is very unlikely as well. Um, they would have either used copper, plastic, those were the two main popular um, themes back then. Uh, there is a slight chance that they could have chose galvanized because it was probably relatively cheap compared to copper back then as well. But that's what we really have to find. I don't, but then we would still have the link that that galvanized was once connected to lead. Um, and I don't think there's going to be any evidence to say that that was once connected to lead because everything has been copper since uh, the distribution system's been put in.
Is there any backfeed from, say, my house? And I don't have this, you guys, my top copper and plastic. But anyway, is there a backfeed if a house has lead and galvanized back into the system? I think that's key, a key question here.
If there is a house connected to the water distribution system that has lead, um, a lead service line or?
Let's say it's all copper to the house.
Right.
It wouldn't be that or anything.
So basically, if there's any lead anywhere in the water distribution system, even on plumbing in people's houses, um, there is a chance that that could backfeed into the water distribution system if there's a water main break, uh, which would cause a loss of pressure and it would suck that water back into the system. Um, or um, through, uh, back, I, that's why, that's why we put backflow preventers in some places. They're not put in residential houses for the most part before the meter. Um, to protect uh, other things from coming inside the plumbing of the house into the system. It's not typically a huge problem, but we do have HydroCorp that does our cross connection control program that goes to um, commercial businesses and and things like that to make sure that those things are not happening. Um, and then also actively when we go into houses, we look to make sure that there's no improper connections uh, to the system. So there's always that slight chance, yes, there's, there's lead fixtures, there's lead soldering, um, that was done. Probably not for most of these houses, seeing as how uh, they're all relatively new here. Um, but there is a very slight chance, however, all the testing that we've done for lead and copper, because that is something that we have to test for, has shown very, very little lead on just, so we did twenty testing results for twenty random houses this year and only two came back with a very insignificant amount of lead. Um, and those are probably due to lead fixtures uh, that, that they have in their house, but it's a very insignificant amount. So lead is not a problem here in Syo.
Will you report back on your progress, like at the next meeting or let Joyce know and Joyce can let us know in her weekly reports or where we are out of the three sixty eight, like the thermometer?
Yes, for sure, yes. Um, we will definitely track it and uh, I can provide that at any board meeting at any time. Or if you guys just contact me, I'd be more than happy to do that. It's no problem.
Thank you.
No problem.
That brings us to the end of our business, unless I'm overlooking something here. Um, that means it's time for
Pardon? Consent was Pappas consent?
Yes, that was a consent.
I just want to make sure.
Yes, yes. And Aurora, Steve, I don't know why.
I'm seeing Brandon.
So uh, that brings us to our second public comment. This is a time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the Board of Trustees. Trustee Riser, will you serve as our timekeeper again?
Can void, Syo resident? Um, thank you, Trustee Carrie, for asking what priority waste complaints came into the township. As I understand it, online complaints go not only to several people in the township, but also to priority. With as many complaints as residents have filed online, I'm, I'm, I really felt like Sam was disingenuous by saying they only had three hundred and fifty six calls. I know I myself have been on Nextdoor helping people use the township portal to file a complaint. And I just, I feel like with as many problems that priority is having right now, that when they come to a meeting and present to this board, they need to be better prepared with all of their data. And so I, it was, it was a huge uh, disappointment that they, he obfuscated by omission what had come into the township. Thank you.
Is there anyone else present who would like to speak during public comment? Seeing none, are there people participating remotely who would like to comment?
There are no hands up at the moment. One, two, one, twice.
All right, um, in that case, um, is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Palmer.
Second.
Supported by Carrie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we are adjourned at eight thirty seven.
Chris, we need to have this online.